With the general business?
Mr. Mayor, we have, this is a special meeting. We have only one item on the agenda, as is consistent with special meetings, council discussion and action tonight, because it is a special meeting, limited to the items on the agenda. One item is for the council to consider appeal by the zoning administrator's decision requiring a PUD sketch plan and sketch plan application fees for the proposed Barstens first edition development. The felon is Warren Barstens. He is appealing that determination by staff. I should advise the council that this is essentially a decision regarding a procedural issue. The council is not being asked to approve any developments or anything related to the development tonight, is really looking for a direction clarification decision related to the application process. Renee has a presentation on the topic, like most items, and then the council should provide an opportunity for the felon to speak to the council as well. If everybody can turn on their microphones, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, councilmember Tim.
I've just got one question before Renee starts. Has everybody read the, so we're all, are we all pretty familiar? Do we need much of a presentation?
I'd like to walk through, but yes, I've read the material.
Yep. Okay. Tom did a good introduction. Here, so, so not only, the appeal is of the zoning administrator's determination that a sketch plan, a PUD sketch plan be reviewed by the planning commission and city council for input, and also the need for a sketch plan application fee and escrow, which under the adopted fee schedule are $400 for the application fee and $5,000 for the escrow. Again, as Tom stated, this is all about procedure. This has nothing to do with the actual approving the project or not, but I did, just for reference purposes, put a site plan in. So, PUD zoning district is a special zoning district that allows flexibilities from the city's typical zoning standards. It can be really anything the applicant is asking for, it can be setbacks, it could be design standards, parking requirements. Any deviations that are being requested by the applicant, they could choose to apply for a PUD zoning district. And the purpose of a PUD is to allow, allow the developer flexibilities in their design and in exchange, look for improved or enhanced design features. So ideally, we're both winning, we're both getting some, something out of the project that, that works for the both of us. Section, or chapter 1128 of the city code addresses planned unit development zoning districts, and it outlines a procedure for approving sketch plans, or, I'm sorry, PUD zoning districts. And the first step is that the applicant should submit an application for a sketch plan, and the procedures, it actually refers to a different section of code for the procedure. But the purpose of the sketch plan is for first, the zoning administrator to review and identify the deviations, and then the zoning administrator has the authority to review, to, or to make the determination on whether that should go to the planning commission and city council for input. The second stage is, is called the development stage application, and that is where they're officially applying for the, the rezoning of the property. This property is currently zoned B1 and is subject to B1 zoning district, district requirements. They would like to rezone it. The development stage PUD is where a public hearing is held, so we notify property owners within 350 feet. There is an official hearing held here at, before the planning commission. The planning commission collects input from staff, the applicant, and the public, and then makes a recommendation, usually either for approval or approval with conditions. They could also choose to have the applicant redesign the project or amend the project. And then the final stage is really just an administrative stage where it's really gone through planning commission and city council approval and any conditions that you impose, this is where I just make sure their conditions are being implemented, or that they've been accounted for. I'm just touching on this again, I did explain it, but the previous section reviewed refers to a different section of the code for the procedure, and in the underlying text here that states, "The zoning administrator shall have the authority to refer the sketch plan to the planning commission and city council for discussion, review, and informal comment." And that is my determination on this particular application. It is a really big project for the city, it's probably the biggest project the city has, will have seen, and maybe all of the time, you know, that we've all been involved here. And the, the degree of the deviations, the type of the deviations that are being requested from our code, I would like the planning commission to give input on the design of the project before we are here in a public hearing setting. Historically, of course, I've only been involved with the city for about a year and a half in this capacity, but with the input from Tom, who has been here for approximately 13 years and has been involved with this process, he says it has been the history to always refer PUDs to the planning commission for a sketch plan review. The process allows appointed and elected officials to review those deviations, to review the proposed design enhancements, what are we getting as, what improvements are we getting in the project over and above our code requirements, and then to simply provide feedback and direction to staff and the applicant. A little history, and I know that there is a lot of history before I was involved with this project, and Dale, I'm sure will touch on that during his presentation, but the first formal engineered plan was submitted to the city in July of 2016, so about a year and a half ago, and it was kind of a one-sheet plan. I did review it, in my opinion, at a higher level. It wasn't, it didn't contain all of the information that I probably would have required had I understood it be an official application. It was not accompanied by an application form, it was not accompanied by an application fee at that time. I tried to collect and give as much feedback as I could, but at that time, I considered that to be informal and... And subsequently advised the applicant that a sketch plan be reviewed by the planning commission and city council. Following the feedback, it is a very complicated project, and we all acknowledge that because of access issues, wetland issues, stormwater issues. The applicant subsequently submitted a stormwater design and calculations to Scott County. They're proposing to connect to a pond owned by Scott County, so they received from some preliminary feedback, which was very positive. It was, there were still, there was still a question hanging out there in my mind by the county, but my point of bringing that up is that they continue to make progress and work on the project. Following that exercise, they did hire a wetland delineator to delineate the wetlands. They met several times with the city and the technical evaluation panel, which was, is a panel of experts on wetlands, to come to an agreement to where the boundary of the wetland was and what may be able to be filled. There was preliminary agreement, but there was no final approval on that. I think it is fair to say that there was a general agreement between everybody pending planning commission input on the site plan as to what might be approved, but today it's not. And then in the beginning of January, received, I received an application, it was an engineered, very complete, good set of plans that was submitted, and the boxes that were checked on the application indicated a development stage PUD and preliminary platter for both. So the application was incomplete, be based on one item, and I kicked it back to the developer and said, "It's incomplete based on this one item, and I'm recommending that the sketch plan, you go back to the sketch plan and submit a sketch plan to the planning commission." So that's what was being appealed today. That's all I have about this time. I included in your memo, there was a basis for, for my recommendation, is there are a lot of deviations on the project that I feel the planning commission should be weighing. Just some building arrangements. And again, I don't want to get caught up on the site plan and building arrangements, because the question I believe is more about process, but the action that we're asking us to... I make a recommendation on the appeal of the zoning administrator determination that the sketch plan be reviewed by the planning commission and city council and the need for an application fee and escrow.
Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dale Rumpel. I've been in the public sector and private sector for the last thirty some years, working on different types of development proposals. As Renee said, this is probably one of the most difficult parcels I have worked on in, I would say probably ever. The parcel itself originally started out as a 10-acre piece, and that's when we first started to see what we could actually do with the 10 acres, you know, at the corner of 91 and 2. The location is wonderful, but the constraints of the property are just very, very difficult to step through. So we started back in, I think it was 216, and the first thing we started to try to understand on the parcel is where do we get access to the property? So we had meetings with the council, or the county, and the county ended up saying we had an access or a full access on 92, on the southern side of the property, and they were reluctant to give any kind of access on County Road 2 because we didn't meet the quarter-mile spacing, we were 60 feet short of a quarter-mile spacing. So I had to work through that issue to even determine how we're going to get access into the property. So after we determined access, that required us to do a traffic study of what impacts that this proposed site could have on the roadway, and essentially it came up saying that the impacts weren't going to be that significant other than on the PM peak, you're going to have a level F at that intersection because of, I don't think it's because our project was adding to it, it was just the general conditions of that roadway the way it is. But we proposed an alternative, which right now has gone nowhere, and that was looking at trying to relieve some of that access, but that's discussions for later if the project ever moves forward. From that point, we started putting, the second point was trying to figure out what could do, site plan after site plan, but if we don't know what area we have to be able to put the site plan on, you know, we couldn't really do a site plan until we started working through the wetland delineation. The wetland delineation took many months, with, started out with Corps of Engineers, Scott County, Soil and Water, Bowser, the DNR, and the city. So we basically, and that was basically the TEP meetings that we had. So we hired a wetland consultant, he went out, delineated the sites, we surveyed the delineation, came back, tried to put a, put a site plan together, and the first site plan we put together, we're looking at filling approximately one acre of the wetland. The Corps of Engineers came back and said, "No, we can't do that." So, so then we went through the, submitted an application for the wetland mitigation to say what we could fill, and the site plan was reduced back to approximately 1,300 square feet of fill to be able to make the project work. But in that process, no matter what plan we put together, wouldn't, the plan would, would have some impact on the wetlands. So if there was not a plan that would fit on that property, that would not impact the wetland. So working through, you know, months, working through that process, through the county, you know, the city, and everything else, we finally came up to a plan that we thought made some sense. It was, the problem with the plan is we have our access points at the farthest ends of the property, and the developable site of the property is right at the intersection of, so whichever, every way we went, we're going through the wetlands, and that was the biggest issue of, you know, how much could we impact to even be able to get to that site? So working with, we finally got to the point of, we got our, I think it came down to 3.43 acres of developable land out of the 10-acre site that was usable for the property. So we started to put together a site plan that tried to incorporate, you know, you start out with a 10-acre parcel, and you're down to 3.4 acres, and you've got utilities and extensions and everything else that are going to the ends of the property, I mean, the improvements on the property to get to where we are is an expensive process to get to. So, I mean, we had to look at the economics of the project to say, what are our development costs, what do we have to do to be able to get a site that's going to even be feasible to work, that will at least pay for itself coming through the process? So we've been working, I don't know, for two and a half years, submitting different plans, getting either rejected. We finally got to a plan where we, where the wetlands were agreed to, as long as we could come back with a detailed plan that would incorporate or incorporate the, I call it, the demarcation line of an area that we cannot, you know, proceed past. And we tried to do that, and working from the area we can't touch, then we start looking at County Road 2 and County Road 91, where we have a 200-foot right-of-way for the roadway, and looking according to the city ordinances, we need 65 feet from the right-of-way line to set the building, and we have our demarcation line on the other end that we can't touch, and everything is just, you know, the ordinances are just pushing everything back into the wetlands that we can't touch. So that was our thought, that the only way that the process, that this plan would be able to have any kind of consideration, because we know we can't meet ordinance requirements with all the requirements, that one ordinance affects the other one, and it squeezes a site that essentially is not buildable by the time we get done, or if it is buildable, it's going to be so minimal that it wouldn't be profitable to go in and even try to do. So putting together the plans, then we started looking at the ordinance procedures, and the only way that we could develop the site was through the plan development process, because I think the plan development process does give the ability to look at the site, look at the constraints of, you know, how many constraints that are on that site, and allow for flexibility to develop something on that site. So that was the rationale, and that was always the rationale after starting into the wetland process, knowing that we couldn't impact that, so, and we knew what the setbacks were to begin with, and we knew that, you know, unless we could go through the plan development process, we wouldn't, you know, it would be an unbuildable site. So looking at the ordinances, so, I don't know, where's that? The first section is, is, I think, on the procedure. And what kind of Renee has cited on the sketch plan, it says, "Prior to filing of a formal application, the applicant shall submit a sketch plan of the project to the zoning administrator. The sketch plan shall be processed according to the Information Requirement Standards Procedures for Sketch Plan as established by section 11.36." So I go to 11.36 of the code, and basically that comes into 11.36, is Site Building Plan Review Building Permit Requirements. So I start, you know, so they pretty much had laid out, we have to follow the section, they quoted all of 11.36, so you start off with section A, B, C, C you finally get to sketch plans, but if you look at, you know, the purpose, and so the purpose of the site, building plan review is to establish a formal site, building plan review procedure. And so, and that's fine, you know, that, you know, the procedure, then, you know, for what kind of process or application we're going for, and basically the PUD is zoning change to the property, the first thing I saw is exceptions to that review. But then after you go down to sketch plans, it says, "Prior to the formulation of the site plan, applicants may present a sketch plan to the zoning administrator prior to filing a formal application. The plan shall be conceptual, but shall be drawn to the scale with topography, contours, intervals, not greater than two feet." And you look at what's required in the sketch plan, it's natural features, just general location, tentative access, circulation, amenities, general location of parking, and you don't get into the detail of, you know, the plans that we have right now. The next thing is, it says, "The zoning administrator has the authority to refer the sketch plan to the planning commission and/or city council for discussion, review, informal comment, and any opinions and comments provided by the applicant, by the zoning administrator, planning commission, and/or city council shall be considered advisory only and shall not constitute any binding requirements." And then the second thing it does, it doesn't start any kind of formal procedures to start the review so that we can get formal comments, you know, to the plan that we have. If you look at, you know, if you look at, you know, if you go past the sketch plan and look, I mean, the sketch plan, I think, we go back saying, I think we, I've got a document from Renee that has a concept plan review that was done back in August 12th of 216, which we do have a concept plan in there, and it has twenty-some pages of review that the city has already kind of looked at from what we had, and gave us somewhat of a guidance. So in the place, in the part that we were at with the TEP meetings and everything else, we got into, they had, I mean, we got into detailed plans that are the next thing to going into a building plan. We're into detailed utilities, detailed drainage, drainage, stormwater management, and stormwater management, we've gone through three renditions on where the ponding is going to go, and what ponding calculations you use, and how to get through that whole process. So we are into, into, I mean, as detailed plan as you're going to get, as if you would be into the site plan review stage, or the, what do they call it, the development, or The development stage plan is essentially the point that we're at. And when I looked at 3.36, you know, when I refer you to that, it says, "We've had meetings with the city, we've had review comments from the city, we thought we were through that concept stage," because we, I mean, we got 20 page of comments back on the plan that we've got, and submitting an application, again, for a sketch plan for $400, $5,000 escrow fee, to me turns into pretty detailed, I mean, a formal application going through, of which we get no binding comments other than just feedback on where we are versus saying, "Yeah, this makes some sense," or, "No, you can't do it." I mean, we aren't asking for the approval, we're just asking for, to be able to go through to get the formal feedback, and, and we're big, you know, we're big enough, been in this business enough that, you know, we know what no is, and we know that when we have ordinances that conflict, I mean, we try to present something that makes economic sense, it makes something viable for the community. So, I mean, let's, I think the ordinance is confusing, the way that it's set up. "We shall submit a sketch plan." We have submitted a sketch plan, but it doesn't say an application has to be submitted according to the way the ordinance is. So I guess that's our, our point. We've been down it two years, we've had numerous meetings with staff, we've, I don't even want to tell you what our side of the equation is, of what we spend on plans and design and everything else to get to the point that we're at, but we're, we're into it pretty good. So I guess that is our position, is, you know, I think we've fulfilled the requirements, I think we've fulfilled the sketch plan process from the end, and moving forward to the development stage plan, I think is where, on the rubber hits the road, where we either get, you know, formal comments back that the plan makes sense, or, you know, we pushed it too far and it doesn't make sense. And I think that's, where we need to be is in that step, where we get some kind of either approval with conditions, you know, because our next step is, we spend a lot of out-of-pocket money, and we get to that development stage where we either get some kind of approval, that's when we get financing for the project. Until we get financing, you know, we just plug in, and we do what we do, is what we've got. The biggest thing right now is for us to get... You know, either some type of review that we can get comments, formal comments, or, you know, and be able to go. And I think the final development stage of the process is where all the financing, everything else comes up with the project. The city has still all the right to say, "Yeah, we've met the conditions," or "We haven't met the conditions," and, you know, to move forward. So I don't think the city's, I don't think we're gaining anything from the sketch plan review that we haven't already been working on for the last two years. And we got to get to the, you know, to that development stage, development plan review so we can get formal comments from the city. I don't know if you've seen them, but it's, uh, just, you know, it's dated August 12th to 16, concept plan review of the plan, and we thought for sure we had, you know, comments back from the city that we could move through that next step. back from the city that we could move through that next step.
I've got one, one comment to make, is, and it's kind of, maybe a question for Steve, is, do you feel the planning commission, I mean, I've got all the faith in you guys to do this right. Do you feel that you guys are qualified to look at these plans and make comments and make changes based on what staff says and your own common sense?
Yeah, the one thing I would refute that Mr. Runcle said is that while he may have submitted plans to the city, planning commission's not seen it, so it's going to be a public hearing, so it will be posted. It will be public record, and we may tear down this plan, which we've never seen, and send the developer back to the drawing board. So that's kind of the purpose of the informal sketch review, is just to talk about it in a non-threatening manner.
I, I think that they understand that, but I think it's a matter of time now for them to get the project, so they've got to take a risk.
If, if they want to go through in, in that regard, then if we have nothing else on the agenda, I think the council or the tuition can come through in two hours, and I don't know what we're going to run into, because I haven't seen a full rundown of everything, but from reading Renee's comments, I don't think we're going to pass it anytime. It's pretty substantial.
Discussion by council?
Want me to go first? Good, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, you know, and if we're talking strictly about the process, the procedure, the way the ordinance are written, I guess, I have a question, because when I, you look at 11.36, and you look at 1128C, 28C six, the PUD procedure, I see, I see the 11-36 where it talks about the maze and that kind of stuff, is if this was a site plan review, a building plan review, that wasn't in the PUD world, I guess is how I understand it. And then when you get into the PUD world of chapter 28, that's where the shells and the other things come into play. So I mean, if we're looking at strictly the way that it's written here, take everything else aside, that's where I see that the rationale, or the justification, or how the determination was made by Renee makes sense to me. And I think I understand how everything kind of ties back and forth, and how you, you know, how it relates back to section 11-3-6. I think that's more talking about, instead of having to replay or reword all the sketch plan comments, that just ties back to that, but it doesn't remove the, the shell piece of that part of the section, so.
It's the staff.
That's just my way of reading the ordinances, and I, I mean, and if that's what we're asking, then I think, then that's a different question, because then we're asking, do we change the ordinances and go through that process? But I, I see these as pretty clear, and again, I like to look at this kind of stuff.
One thing I noticed in that is, it, it does give the appeal process, so we have the final site.
Right.
So, I mean.
Correct.
It, it's a case where, for us, do we want to appear that we're going to be friendly to development, especially a development that's been going through a lot?
I don't think that following some protocol means we're not being friendly to development. I recognize how long that this has been in flight. I also recognize how complicated it is, which is part of why it's been in flight for so long. And frankly, the, there was, there, it's in writing, Renee stipulated, you still need to do a sketch plan. That is a documented statement, so I'm not sure where it was unclear that you still needed to do a sketch plan, because it was, you were told. So, I'm, so, so, so it was a known thing a couple of years ago that a sketch plan was still needed. And this is a complicated thing. I, for me, I am very uncomfortable not having it go through our planning committee first, whether it's their plan that they have now, letting our commission look through it and provide feedback, I don't, I don't see how that's a bad thing. We're not saying no, we're simply following a process that's in place for a reason, and a really good reason, from what I can tell. So that's, that's my thoughts.
I would agree. I would say that there's enough on here that's listed that needs to be addressed on this sketch plan to go forward to the planning commission, to have them look it over. I know, I understand the pains of, of going through building, and I empathize with you guys, I do, but there's rules and regulations and ordinances that we do with anybody that comes in, and I would love to see it go through the correct process of the sketch plan, going to the planning commission first, so they have a chance to look it over before you're in front of a fire ring squad, so to speak.
Well, and if we, and if we need to talk about, I mean, the fee is another consideration, right? We, we, this is kind of a twofold thing. One, do we want to recommend that it go through sketch plan process?
Correct.
And two, do we want to consider waiving any fees or not?
Correct.
So there's two.
There's two parts, and the answer to the first question will have influence on the answer to the second.
Correct.
Can I just, maybe I didn't make it as clear as I wanted you on, on the procedure, right? I, I think the ordinance, I mean, it says we shall submit a sketch plan. We have submitted a sketch plan. It does not say we have to submit an application for a sketch plan, other than the only place an application shows up is on, on the formal application thing. All the other procedures say, gives you a procedure that you want, you submit a formal application for review, and does not say that an application, just as a sketch plan shall be submitted.
And I believe there's communication from Renee that the sketch plan must be formally submitted, and the fees.
It does not say formally, it just says sketch plan.
Well, but you, technically, you never submitted a sketch plan if you never paid for the process.
You've got a sketch, sketch plan.
That was an, yeah, it was an informal, hey, we're being nice, we're happy to take a first blush look at this for you, and give you as much information as we can, so that when you do submit your sketch plan, it's in good order, and it should grow right through, I mean, they'll, should flow through the process.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so part of the discussion here that I'd like to try and get resolution on.
Yeah.
That we're getting into, and I don't want to get too far into this on it, is Dale is essentially making an argument that since the code does not explicitly state a need for an application, that one is not required, and by default, then there's no fee required either. It might be a good idea, this might be one of those times where it's good to ask the city attorney's opinion on that particular topic.
Sure.
Right. I mean, I mean, it does reference a sketch plan, the city has an ordinance that provides for fees for sketch plan approval, which is read in conjunction with the sketch plan requirements, so.
So can you say that in English so I can understand what you just said? I'm sorry.
Right. The fact that it doesn't say sketch plan application, it's, it's assumed, a sketch plan application goes along with the term sketch plan.
Okay.
And the city has an ordinance, has always interpreted it as requiring a fee, and provides for that.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a fee regardless, and the application, if you think about it, is just simply the documentation that goes along with the, along with the request.
Steve?
Mr. Mayor, if, if it works better, I know that they were trying to expedite this, I mean, we could have a additional meeting with the planning commission for a preliminary sketch review, while in conjunction scheduling the formal application with the city two weeks later, or something like that. I, I think to be fair to the planning commission to review it, on top of, this is a prominent corner, development's going to be there for fifty years.
Yeah, it's going to go through.
It does deserve some discourse, so I'm certain that we'd be willing to entertain two meetings or three, four, five, six, in one month.
Would, is that agreeable to everybody?
I, yeah, I wanted to go through planning, so.
I'm fully, I, I support you guys, and like, I know, I know you could do it in one meeting, but I can understand your angst about having a public hearing at the same time.
That's the, the catch, would be, yeah, I mean, we're going to be in front of the public reviewing this, and they're, you know, it's not going to put us on good foot, but...
Well, and I think, I mean, we have to be careful, that, you know, this begins to set the tone of how we do this moving forward, and God only hopes that we're going to have more development and stuff that is going to want to go through this same process. So what we do now, we start waiving stuff or doing stuff, I mean, I think truly has an impact into the future, and I'll argue both sides of that every time, a chance I get, to say we can, we can make a case-by-case determination, and we can also, I mean, we set precedence, I mean.
I mean, I've looked at it, and I've looked at the cities, there's only half the cities have a sketch plan review. I mean, and a lot of the others that I've checked with, a third of the time, they don't do the sketch plan review, they waive it.
And I can appreciate what other cities do and don't do, but this is our city.
Well, I realize that.
And to that point, I think then, you know, if it's something that, if we don't think sketch plan review is part of the process, then we have to do that.
Right, right.
But not on a case-by-case, or, I mean, that's where we.
But what I'm saying is, other cities, the cities that aren't doing it are booming.
I don't think a sketch plan is what's holding up our development.
Well, it's, every, we have a lot of, we, we have a lot of things that are holding up our development, a lot of little things. Some aren't so little, some are a $2,000, you know.
Maybe just a point of clarification in the discussion, the discussion right now is not whether or not we should amend our ordinance to require sketch plan.
No, we know that.
Which quite honestly is a very good policy question, and I could make an argument both ways on that particular item.
Yes.
We're talking about the application of the ordinance we have today.
Correct.
The ordinance that we have today is very clear that a sketch plan is required, and quite honestly, as part of the appeal, the app, the appellant isn't appealing whether one's required, it's simply a determination on whether it needs to go to.
Whether it's already been filled.
The planning commission and the council, consistent with the determination of the zoning administrator.
Correct.
Once that decision's made, then we can talk about fees and all that kind of stuff, but.
Well, my stance is, I would like it to go through planning commission.
I would like it to go through planning.
So you want an extra meeting in planning commission?
I want whatever it takes to go through planning commission, yes.
Even if that would jeopardize the possibility of the development?
I cannot imagine that a two-week delay is going to jeopardize this project that's been in flight for two-plus years or more. And if it is, then, I, I'm sorry, I, I think we need to do our due diligence, no, I'm not sorry, we need to do our due diligence, and I would like it to go through planning commission. That's my stance.
Can I ask why this project would be jeopardized by the delay? We talk a lot about it's jeopardizing the project, but.
Right, why?
For purposes of the public record, why is that?
So I guess, what do we get out of the informal review, other than informal comments that?
So, I'd like to add that the review memo that I submitted back to the applicant in August of 2016 had a number of recommendations that I don't feel have been addressed in the re-submital. So at least half of the items have been disregarded entirely, and that's okay if, if my recommendation as staff is, plan revisions should incorporate a ten-foot drainage and ecology system on the property, and you chose not to do that. And future submittals should show X, Y, and Z, and you chose not to do that. But you, I feel that you should also accompany your submittal with your rationale as to why you haven't addressed the county's requirement for a term loan in the property, or there's, I don't feel there was enough information provided on your end as an explanation for not addressing the majority of my recommendations in my memo for a year and a half.
And I think if it went through the formal, more, a more formal process, it would have to be addressed. And, and I mean, and quite honestly, I mean, I see you guys setting up two meetings or whatever, but it, and not even, I don't even go there. You know, I, I think, I think it should go through the planning commission piece now, so we don't get too far ahead of ourselves. And it, it is a crucial.
It's a crucial step.
So, I also want to add a little bit about the planning, the schedule of the planning commission over the next six weeks, so, the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting, unfortunately, they don't have a coordinate that meeting in two weeks, and the scheduled vacations, they're right in the middle of us changing that schedule. So, we're looking at a tentative meeting on the 6th of March, that's a Tuesday, and then the next regular scheduled meeting is the 27th of March. So there is already two meetings in, would be in March, approximately three weeks apart. And if the applicant is prepared to acknowledge the feedback from the planning commission or our council, and cooperate that into planner revisions for the following meeting, we can have some recommendations in early April.
Renee, would there be adequate time? So part of this is an assumption that things are at a point to move on to hearing.
Right.
So as the planning commission chair indicated, without having seen it, there's a potential that there might be a large number of things that the applicant may be asked to address or provide additional information on, whatever it might be, which means that maybe that needs to come back, or the applicant may need time to address those.
Right.
In an ideal world, we'd be able to go from one commission to the other. Would there be adequate time coming out of the first meeting in March to post hearing notices and everything to move right into that second meeting, which, as we've talked about, if it was the development stage, which would be a hearing setting, which would require public notices, mailed notices, et cetera?
I could post the meeting and, and notice the hearing, but I wouldn't have the revised materials at that point.
So if there's a need for revised materials, would that provide adequate time? I just want to create, I just want to make sure there's realistic expectations for timing.
Yes, some of this goes back to the developer's ability to overturn any revisions. As an example, the planning commission might not like the building blocks, they might want you to change some things in the buildings. Can your architect turn a revision? That would be difficult in, in the ten day, are you prepared to do that? I can't answer all of the questions.
What I would say is, scheduled a February meeting, public hearing for the 27th now, obviously that can be canceled within the thirty days, but you can't make those thirty days out, so schedule it now, and we'll have the preliminary sketch review on the 6th of March, and that will give the developer free weeks, and if he can't meet that, then it just gets pushed to April. We cancel the public hearing for the 4th of March. You can't make the next meeting anyways, because it's too short of a timeframe, and you can't post everything, so, she has to have everything, so, it doesn't really hurt to have the six, the meeting on the 6th, the preliminary sketch review.
The application deadline is usually thirty days, if that's time.
But the publication deadline's roughly two weeks ahead of the meeting.
Either way.
I just have a question. Can the planning commission meet in February?
That's going to be tough, actually, we don't have a forum for the last week of February.
Okay, that's, I just, that's, yeah, sorry.
And at this point, we don't have a complete application either.
Correct, so we're just, time.
What are we short on the application, exactly?
And then, recommended that truck turning units be, primarily the application.
That the truck turning units can be, if they're submitted in a timely fashion, we can accommodate it in every review process leading up to the, leading up to the meeting.
Okay.
Oftentimes, we will do that for smaller pieces of information, supplemental information request, but we won't, but without the fee, we can close it. But we'll assume that, you know, assuming the applicant can make the fee, that's, I just want to make sure that that's.
Okay.
So, clear. And that, in order to make that timeline, we would need that actually this week, on Friday, in order to be able to make publication timelines and everything.
Okay, so are we, do we need to call for a vote or anything on whether we want it to go through planning commission, or how is this?
So, so that, we would need a, a vote to deny the appeal, or a vote to uphold the appeal, and then give direction on how you would like to have it handled. And once we've determined that item, then we would need. determined that item, then we would need to have a discussion related to how the fees would be handled based on the decision regarding whether or not the sketch plan process would be required.
So which way does everybody want to go for a share of that? The, I get one. You said you're not gonna have a forum on, at the end of the month.
No, we could probably accommodate something in the next week, but the whole last week of February, there is no forum.
How about, let's see, this is the seventh, how about like in two weeks before the end of the, the week before?
That's possible. We could have Renee reach out to the rest of the commission to see if we'd be able to accommodate.
You know, for just the sketch plan review.
Right.
And that's.
And the mayor's correct, sketch plan doesn't require hearings or anything like that, so it's.
They would let them look at it.
I mean, that's what, that's what I was asking. Is there anything we can do in February?
It's the last week of February that we have multiple people out to accommodate.
If you updated it, it would jumpstart them a little.
Yeah, I mean, if, that, that would, if, if we can do that earlier, that would give them more time for that, to get their stuff.
By March 6th.
For the actual development, you know.
Yeah, no, if Renee wants to reach out to the commission as a whole to find out we got a forum for sketch plan review in the next two weeks, it would be feasible.
And if we can't, just, so I want to make sure that we've talked through all the scenarios. So that, so what I'm hearing is that there would be support to do that, have a special planning commission meeting for that purpose. I'm just talking through, for that purpose. And then depending on the outcome of that, there would be the potential then to the applicant to move on to regular March 6th. We would have to post for that in advance, and if not, the safety net would then be the regular.
Right. So what I'm, so what I'm hearing is we post for the 6th, and then play it by ear, and then post for the 27th if we had to.
Yes.
So that would get.
Time to correct everything.
Well, that's, that's where they're.
That's where they decide.
That's on the developer's.
So if he wants to go, if he thinks he can be ready.
So we're trying to give them.
So, so we post it, we cancel it. If it's not gonna make it, we still have plenty of time to then.
Get to the 27th.
To cancel it and repost it for the regular March meetings.
Well, how, well, how do you feel about that?
So, I'm out of time during the time, during part of the time you're suggesting. So literally, the only date I see this working is February 22nd, which is the same night as a council meeting, or February 26th. Well, no, you're gone that night. You're gone that day.
We, uh, we don't have to hold it in this chamber. We could be there.
You can hold it at a different time.
Different day, different.
During, yeah.
There's nothing that says you can't have meetings the same night, so.
Okay, so, so we need to vote.
Yeah, so what I would suggest, the council is, position is that sketch plan, that sketch plan review by the planning commission is required. You would sue, and then just direct staff to work with the applicant to work out, to do as expeditiously as possible, work with the planning commission on special meeting, et cetera.
So moves.
Second. One other question we should probably, are we going to waive the fee for the special meeting?
We gotta get to now.
We have to do this first.
So I think we can work through this question.
That's next.
That's, that's my second, that's what, so do we want to waive the fee?
So we need to call a roll, right?
Right.
We had a first, a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need to decide if we're gonna charge a special fee.
Okay, so let's, let's work through the other big question, then we'll go through the small question. So then the big question is, there is a fee and an escrow requirement related to the sketch plan. They have also appealed that request as well. Council needs to make a determination whether or not a $4,000 application fee, $5,000 escrow.
400.
400.
400.
$400 fee.
We gotcha.
Yes, would be required.
My only thought on that is, as far as the city goes, we've got so much money invested in this already that we can't recover. Because it wasn't covered, because we directed staff to do a lot of.
To be accommodating and friendly.
Let's, let's try and get something out of this development and get it done as quickly as possible, so we can start getting some money back.
So what did that mean? Don't charge the fee?
Let's waive, let's waive the fees and just.
Sorry, I just.
Push it through, you know what I mean?
The one piece of advice I would give the council, and we've given this before in other situations, if you are going to waive a fee, and we have done that in certain circumstances, we would strongly recommend that you clearly identify why this is a one-off as opposed to any other project that comes by. So if we have something to hang our hand on, the next person also wants to have the fee waived.
Can I clarify something real quick? So the $5,400 that we are talking about possibly waiving this evening is just for the sketch plan, correct?
Correct.
It does not take away the fees for the development PUD or the preliminary platform?
No, the reality is, when you get sketch plans, and Phil's absolutely correct, they are providing a much higher level of detail than you would typically see for a sketch plan. Now, in their case, because of complexity of projects, some of that detail is required to be able to come to a design. So in this case, more than a lot of other sketch, typical sketch plan, if there is a typical, is you're gonna be able to provide a higher level of review, so they're, you know, at this level than you normally might, because you have more detail to do so, to some degree. So that, what's done at this stage will then be, not need to be done at the next stage. Now, for sketch plan review, we're not doing detailed stormwater calculations and that kind of stuff on the engineering side. The city attorney isn't drafting development agreements or anything like that. But we do have more detail than we typically do at this level of review because of the work they've had to do. So a lot of that can also carry over, provided that the project doesn't get significantly reworked because of the sketch plan process.
So $5,000 escrow, and escrow typically means this is money to ensure that we get paid for at least this amount. Should they not utilize or tap that full $5,000, in theory, they would get a portion back? Is that true?
Correct. The, the escrow covers our external costs for work that consultants do. Now, a lot of the review, quite honestly, Renee, has been working on this as time permits, to try and stay ahead of the game, recognize the time constraints.
Correct.
So it doesn't, that, that's not billed internally, but for any review and comments that we might have from the city engineer's office, or the city attorney's office, or another specialist that might be required.
Right.
It would cover those expenses.
Okay. So in theory, if we didn't use it all, they would get money back?
That is correct.
Okay.
Or, more often what happens, because that.
It just rolls for the next.
They can just say, please roll the escrow from this application forward to the next application.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that it wouldn't all necessarily be used. All right. I know where I stand.
Well, do I hear a motion one way or the other, how we're doing?
Do you want to poll us how we feel?
How, how, how do you feel about it?
Um, you are correct. We have spent a lot of time and energy on this. A lot of dollars have been, been spent on both sides, both the developer and the city. Obviously, I would like to see more development here in Alcoa New Market. I have a hard time saying to waive it, because I know that there are fees out there that haven't been paid, that the city has had to cover. But I also have a hard time saying pay it, because I want to see development here. And he is a standing citizen here in, in Alcoa New Market, and, so I'm gonna say for this one time and one time only, I know, I'm sorry.
She sounds like you!
I know. I, I'm sorry, I just, sometimes it helps to talk it through.
Can I throw one thing in?
I'm, I'm gonna say, let's, let's waive it this one time.
And then my question to you is, why? Why is this different than any other project we're gonna see coming down the line that we want?
Because I can, I can answer one thing there. This is probably one of the most difficult pieces of property we're gonna have in the city, in one of the most choice locations. And if we want something there, and something that's gonna look good, and also be good for the community, I mean, this is, part, part of this is a 10, almost a 10,000 square foot convenience store grocery slash grocery store, which is the number one thing our community is looking for.
So again, I'm putting my attorney hat, even though I'm not an attorney. We, as a council, have to have really strong legs to stand on as to why we would waive a fee. All developments are important. And so I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I'm not saying I don't agree. I'm just, again, I want us to be really sure, when we waive fees, that we're really clear on why we're doing it and what, what precedent we're setting, because I can see there's gonna be a lot of other parcels that are potentially difficult. And there's a lot of other, I mean, we all want development, absolutely. But does that mean we waive all of our, our, I, I don't know, I, I struggle with this one a lot.
So let me ask you this real quick. So as far as the fee goes, we've already been told by Tom that the resources of Andrea, the resources of Rich on the sketch plan maybe are not as used as much as they will be when we go into the further, correct?
Typically correct.
Typically correct. So the funds, the escrow may not have to be used.
My, my expectation is.
For this, for this portion. Obviously, the next portion, we're going to have to enlist Andrea and Rich and so forth, so.
So are there things that the council could do that they have done in the past, and there is precedence for, is that you could either reduce the escrow, or you could cap the amount that we will bill back? We have done both of those, or combination of those in the past, given unique circumstances. You recall that with the track, we did that. There was some discussion about, okay, given special circumstances of that application and work that was previously done, and so on and so forth. Or with other applications, where quite honestly, there are various, this one's not, but other ones where it was very simple, very straightforward, the amount of the escrow was not proportional to the amount of external resources that we would use. The council has made modifications. So it isn't necessarily a question of it's there or not. You could also look at either capping the amount we bill back, or reducing the escrow requirement. We have not had a discussion at staff level of what that escrow requirement dollar amount would be for something like this. So this is the first time that discussion's coming up, but those are both options.
Could we, this is just an idea I just had, could we waive the fee subject to when they come in for the, for the development, any costs that were incurred by consultants? In the sketch plan carries, carryover?
They're typically not, they're.
Do we have to, does it have to be so separated that?
Well, the fees we're billing for are associated with that particular application, for that particular purpose. I'd have to consult with the city attorney, but I don't know, you can back bill for something that's not associated with that application.
So Josh, you've been a whole quiet. I'd love to hear your thoughts.
I'd just like to listen to you guys. I think fees are there for a reason. I think we've spent a lot of time and energy and not had any fees paid. I think the fee stays, and I think the escrow stays. And then if they don't use it, then we don't use it, we give it back. It gets into the big policy, bigger policy question of whether the fees justify blah, 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 and everything else, but.
Look at that.
I, I don't see any, I, I guess I don't see a valid reason why to do it here and not for somebody into the future, or somebody that we didn't waive it in the past.
Well, I, I remember when we were talking about grocery store, and we had people in talking, some of these grocery stores were looking for huge amounts of money to come into our city. We're talking million dollars.
But we're here today.
We're here today.
With this.
And we're still, still, this is a couple, few years later, that we still don't have anything for a grocery store.
What about a different one?
Uh huh.
Can you just go with the third?
We just talked about, when you say defer to, I think.
After application?
Well, no.
These to tie to the application?
Of these, yeah.
So here, where I have a sketch plan application, you can only charge for the fees related to the review of that. Once you get to the develop, the final stage, development plans or PUD, you can only charge for the esc, the escrow for those fees.
Right. So bottom line, we either do this, so we, there's, and there's two separate pieces. There's the escrow, and then there's the application fee. So there's two things we could waive.
To, to be perfectly blunt, the application fee does not cover our internal expenses.
I'm sure.
It's a, it's, it's offsets it.
Right.
Because when we, I mean, we're staff, that's why you hire us, we're here, and our time is fluid, and it goes wherever it needs to be. So it's a partial offset. The, the real dollars, the real good thing is the escrow, because that's all external expenses. Renee and I will be here every day regardless.
Right. So, so the escrow covers what we actually have to pay out.
Correct. So, so what we don't cover.
That's kind of critical.
The taxpayer.
Right.
What, what the applicant doesn't cover through escrow, the taxpayer has to cover.
Correct.
And I think if we use, and if, if the escrow money isn't used, great, and then that's whatever. But if it is used, then it was used, and then I'd be glad that we had it, and that we didn't pass along that cost to something else, or we just ate it, or whatever.
And this escrow can roll forward to the next escrow that's going to be required, correct, if we don't use it all?
It can, or they can get a refund. So you can roll it, or you can refund it.
Sometimes it's a timing issue between, when we're talking rapidly accelerating meetings, we probably won't have the billings to put against it by the time they're putting in their next application realistically.
Right.
So we would, but they would get returned whatever wasn't used.
Correct.
Renee, ultimately, does the sketch plan review reduce the costs that are going to end being incurred for the final stage plan review?
You pay, you pay for it at one end or the other.
I think, I mean, you guys know me. I, I, we have ordinances, we have regulations for a reason. I like to stick with them. If we're not gonna skip, stay with them, then we need to look at the bigger picture and revise, but.
I, 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 I'm totally in favor of going through our ordinances and revising it, and that way for a long time.
And agreed, and we need to make that a priority, because I've heard us say that probably five times in the last year. So.
Probably a lot more than that.
So we'll work with, we really need to make that a priority. I agree. But I'm sitting here today, my, my viewpoint is, I'm not hearing anything that I can really stand strongly on to waive me to want to waive the fees. So I'm, my, my stance is fees stay. So I don't know.
Make a move.
Well, I mean, so, so I, I move to not approve the appeal for the fees.
Second.
For both, for application and?
Correct.
Special meeting's a separate question.
Oh, yeah.
Special meeting?
No.
No, application.
Application and.
There's two, yeah. So I'm, I'm, I am moving that we deny the appeal for both waiving the application fee and the escrow.
Second.
And he seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there, there's an additional request, I think, of, of items. Can we talk about special meeting fees as part of this, under this?
I don't, I don't think that that's too off base from what you're discussing.
So there's two things. One, the, the appellant had paid for a special meeting fee for tonight. The council in the past has been considerate of these things to encourage development.
Move to give it back.
Second.
Okay.
What is the fee?
$400.
All in favor?
Aye. You can say nay.
Well, we just didn't have much of a discussion, so aye. It was just a silly process.
And how about the, how about the fee for the special plan, for the special planning commission?
So let's just do it as one blanket. Is the, with the council, does the council want to charge for special meeting fees for any special meetings associated with this application?
There's a reason why we have fees, so we're not just gonna start waiving fees for special meetings. And, and so I mean.
Well, our fees are supposed to be based on expenses, and.
And there's, there's expense, holding meetings, there's expense for the, there's expenses that have to be accounted for, that we can't just start wa, I mean, you guys are fiscally more conservative than I am. I can't believe we're just not bringing in revenue here to cover the costs of what it costs to run a city.
The, the only cost I see in this meeting is probably Andrea.
Yeah, but it, but it does come down to how you view cost allocation. If you take the, I mean, if you take the, the idea that staff is, staff is paid to be here regardless, then you shouldn't even be hired, you shouldn't even be processing a 400 application fee. However, the reason you have staff is to process these applications, and so you want to recover that cost. That's a separate philosophical discussion for another day about our fee structure and how we approach it. But the question, just for right now, is do we want to charge for special meetings associated with this project?
So, so the only, so the only reason I would say we would charge for this one is because it, we were asked to do, because they couldn't accommodate the meeting tomorrow. So this was their schedule.
Did we just waive?
We just waived.
No, well, no, we, we talked about voting.
Yeah, we waived this one.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
So this would be for additional ones?
This would be for the, the planning commission.
Okay.
Meet, special meeting that they would hold in the next week or two to get the schedule. plan out of the way so they could get.
Or potentially a special council meeting or anything like that, if it comes up.
Is it?
Can we change the fee for that or charge just up to what the actual cost is?
Why would you do that for this particular case and not everybody else then? That makes no sense to me.
Well, our fees, our fees are supposed to be based on what the costs are.
Right, but, so, so I, I guess my feeling is if we need a couple special meetings to help development along, I kind of am okay with waiving fees for that to be revisited as we move forward as a city. So for me, I guess, you know, you're trying to keep the process moving, and if that takes special meetings, then yeah, okay, there's some cost incurred, but that to me feels different than waiving the fees we waived before, or keeping the fees we kept before. Sorry.
And then I think it's different if we just say we're waiving all fees, special meeting fees for this project moving forward, or as, as a special meeting occurs.
I think.
I'm not, I'm not going to vote yes to waive.
No, I think it's, no, 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 no.
No, we're talking specific.
We're talking per meeting.
I'm just trying to be efficient and say, are we okay holding special meetings at no additional cost for this?
No, and I don't think that's what we're saying. I think what we're saying is as special meetings occur, we could potentially waive those special meeting fees at that time of those special meetings, but we won't be waiving them blanketly into the future.
And I agree with that.
Because who knows how many special meetings there might be that pop up.
With this project?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, and I, too, I think some of it is the driver, is it, we want the special meeting because we want to keep our process moving, or are they asking for the special? I mean, there's a, there's a balance of why are we doing?
Decided on a case by case basis.
Agreed, yes.
So do we wa, are we going to waive the special?
I actually regret waiving the one that I did because I'm on the other, I, yeah, we shouldn't have had more discussion, but that's okay.
So.
We'll get over it.
Do I have a motion for waiving the fee for the special planning commission meeting to get this moving?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You want an opposed?
Yeah.
Josh says nay. Okay, are we done?
Any other business? I don't think there is.
No, we've answered the two, we've answered the two appeal questions and any ancillary items that came up associated with it, so our business here tonight.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Trish and Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meeting adjourned.